So I think they were happy with the one way in, one way out as well.
So changing grades per land recommendation is not going to have any impact on your application?
Well, I don't know. We're gonna have to find out. It's possible they may have comments about.
They've become stickler about plans, you know?
Yeah, so that we may have to ask for a modification, have to ask for modification at that point.
But hopefully they see it as an improvement and enhancement of it.
So I think I can work on that, the slopes going in, something we certainly could do. I will address that, try to come up with a rise plan for the grading, as Larry had indicated. So that's one item that, you know, if I was at the entrance to Mexico and if I was the Mass Highway Permit and signage goes, I think we can address those things, sort of already have, and will add on to this plan. Provide you with copies of the Mass Highway Plans that we submitted as well, which were different plans and just that would be access. We have asked for the variance for the parking in the front. We didn't recognize that as a requirement for variance. We have ZVA meeting tomorrow actually for that purpose.
I had a question about that. Do the vehicles have to be in the front setback here?
Because of the shape of the lot and, you know, the way we're using it, I believe there's no other place to put the parking to make it work. We only have ten parking spots, which is the bed and what we need for the size of building we have.
I also, I met with the fire chief and he wanted the parking forward. He's like, I need to have as much room as I can get my trucks in here, because we have a new eighty thousand pound truck.
To access the building.
Correct. We'll have to, we might mean me, have to figure out. Done screening over here on my meeting with the fire chief. He said, you know, I want to keep that area clear so that if I need to get a truck around here, I have access. I need space around there.
It's gonna be tough to fulfill both of those. You know, Larry, you can curb it and you can make it look nice, but.
Couldn't the screening go all the way back even up to here? I know that this is what we're trying to screen.
No, I got a pavement no longer.
He wants to get all the way around.
I'm thinking of the screening going up more to the front.
Also, it goes around.
If it's real close, if it's within fifteen, twenty feet, he won't be happy. Because he wants to have room.
He wants to be able to ride around.
Yeah.
Which is difficult for me.
So the fire chief wanted you to move the vehicles closer to the street than what you're showing.
He wants to be able to pull a truck in here and have room and not have any vehicles in the way. So he's saying the closer to Route One, the happier he is from his perspective of having room for his truck.
Is there, what's besides, I think the fence.
Well, the fence is already modified.
Right, it's not the optimal.
No, well, it's.
I suggested when you first, you know, had it on the plan, you know, to slat it, at least to make it look a little better, but that doesn't, that totally defeats the purpose of what you're trying to achieve from the visibility.
We have, we have actually, and it wasn't on the original plan, we had to go all around. We have modified the fence.
Okay, all right. We're gonna wait a lot of time to look at the next one.
We'll outline that on the new plan.
Is there anything in front of the parking and looking at the cars? I mean, is that where you're getting that cliff?
Well, you know, I just question whether you need to put the cars there, because, I mean, the purpose of that front setback is to, is to have a landscape buffer.
Have some buffer, yeah.
And that would be a nice place for some landscaping.
I mean, we have provided some landscaping along in this area and this is what the trees are. There's a little stone wall, existing stone wall. We're gonna maintain that wall. That does end right here.
At least it does a wall.
I know that it does make it right, but if you look across the street, everybody is in that, you know, their parking. Yeah, yeah, that doesn't make it right. No, it doesn't make it right, but also the geography there.
Right.
These spaces sit down below the road.
Oh, okay.
Close to sitting right.
Well, we're gonna have a site visit anyway, so we'll be able to visualize it on a site visit.
The road grade is seventy-six and the parking's at seventy-two, so it's about four, four, four.
That's a different setup than across the street for sure.
I think with the shape of the lot, you have a difficult time finding another spot.
Well, yeah, it would have to be in front of the building by your entrance and, not by your entrance, the left side.
But there's doors, there's doors there if I remember.
And those are your garage, those are your loading, unloading.
Truck jobs.
Correct.
Deliveries and.
Put out vehicles and everything.
Mr. Chairman, we did get that letter from Frank Marche.
I was glad I said I was gonna bring it up.
Okay, so we need to know that if that bottom message board is illuminated internally, illuminated or not, because it's not alone.
I know, the letter is in, is a letter from Frank. It was a regulatory officer in the town through various boards. And there's a letter, it's attachment A. Attachment A, as you can see, are plans to the interior of the building. It's gonna be nice, I mean, it's gonna be very nice compared to what's there now. This letter is dated September ninth, two thousand and thirteen. I can't pronounce Frank's last name.
I know, I worked with him many days and I don't know.
Marcha, Marcha Gianni. So I think that's pretty bad. It's a reference of special permit application for internally illuminated sign. And he has reviewed the application. The comments are basically the three main comments and, of course, he cites some sections of the bylaw. By the drawing of the proposed sign provided in the application, appears that the sign is composed of two sections. The top portion appears to be a standard box silent lettering and a background. The translucent burgundy colored background with lighter white opaque lettering appears to comply with section eight point six point five point seven of the bylaw. It is unclear if the bottom portion consisting of the four lines of changeable letter board will be internally illuminated. If it is internally illuminated, appears to be in violation of sections eight point six point five point seven of the bylaw due to the white background color and the darker opaque lettering. Number two, the application does not state the intensity of the illumination for the sign. It would need to be in compliance with section eight point six point five point eight of the bylaw, depending what type of setting the board determines it to be. The bylaw allows for a maximum of eighty candela's per square foot for a sign. In an average commercial environment, there does not appear to be any flashing animated moving components of the sign, which is in compliance with section eight point six point five point nine of the bylaw. And that's Frank's comments, which, you know, pretty straightforward. I mean, I guess you could respond.
Says on the drawing and it's not illuminated.
Yeah, we went through, I guess we, you hadn't decided yet or?
No, it's said non-illuminated, so I'm not sure. I've never seen this letter, so I don't know.
I mean, it's just, he has to do this.
Yeah.
Which we appreciate because that's how someone kind of deal with these standards for illuminated signs.
What about the lights pointing up? Are they gonna point up?
Well.
The ground light? Do you have ground light pointing up?
Yes, but I think that's not part of the sign.
Well, part of it, there was a question here in terms of the intensity of illumination for the sign. And I guess maybe I didn't study it as well as I should have. Is it coming, is it coming from the ground and illuminating the sign or is it from above the cutoffs?
Well, I think the sign's got to be backlit.
Oh, well, okay, it is backlit, okay. So that's backlit, but there will be no other lighting from the ground for that sign? No?
Believe that's correct.
Okay, but there is, you do want to highlight some of your specimens through that kind of decorative lighting, right?
Like backlit? What do you mean by that backlit?
Now we're getting off the sign and we're getting into illumination.
No, 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 we're talking back.
But we're back in the sign. It's backlit, it's internally lit.
If the sign, if you're driving north, you're going to read what's in my right hand. And if you're driving south, you'll see what's on my left hand. And in between would be the light bulbs. So that you could see the name.
And they just have to be within the.
The eighty.
Right, eighty, and I don't, that's kind of a technical term. I don't know how bright eighty is, but I see the rest of them on Route One and you can see them, so.
Sorry, I missed, did you say that the message board will be internally illuminated also here?
No, that's what, that's no.
Oh, I just missed that.
He said no, he said, because it says, it says no everywhere, so. That's what you're saying. Never said it was going to be, right?
I think on our first discussion about this, we said, you said it's not clearly labeled on here. So then we relabeled to make sure it was clearly labeled as to what was going on. That's the only clarification. So the exhibit that you have in your packet says the top is illuminated internally because that's on the burgundy background. The white background cannot be, so it's not.
Thank you Katrina for putting that out. That's attachment A. I believe, right?
Yep.
So do we need to give them a special product for that? For this part of this?
So that's, I mean, it's a nice looking sign. And it allows, yeah, it's a nice looking sign compared to a lot of them, any ones, so it's an upgrade in my opinion. In terms of, and also the post, a pretty good looking post. Are they vinyl or wood?
I'll do some kind of vinyl, Isaac.
So weatherproof kind of, yeah.
Probably.
Or less maintenance?
Okay. Probably these steel pipes.
Non-shining vinyl.
Any other comments? Now Cliff, you wanted, are we still having a discussion on, I think tastefully done, especially in a landscape setting? Some of the lighting, you know, and some specimens, if it's not really bright and, you know, it's pointed in the right direction, it would be effective.
I think that's, I think that could be very nicely done.
Yeah, I think so too. I think it'll.
I don't know if they use the arguments which is particularly written for.
Trees, no.
The trees.
No, I think it can be really obscene in so many settings, obviously in resorts setting.
Yes.
Most of those lights are tweakable once.
Correct. We can change it from thirty-five watts to twenty watts if we needed to, or I could put a frosted lens on it instead of a clear lens. Now, when I light a thirty, forty foot tall tree, the light doesn't reach the whole canopy. We go up in the trees and we put more lights up in the trees if we're in someone's backyard and they want to see the entire.
Or to get the continuation.
Correct. So I'm not concerned by reading any of the rules that when these lights turn on, anybody's going to say, okay, I'm up twenty feet and I'm being blinded, because it's a different, low voltage lighting versus your household. It's not a spotlight shining up so you can see it from afar.
It's artistic.
Yes.
Artistic design.
And it is allowed by our zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I just think it's a nice landscaping function when people have the means for the landscaping to do it.
One of the other items that I'd like to address on the concerns that were expressed was the building location, fifty foot, seventy foot setback. At the very, very initial onset of looking at this property for Mr. Hurley, we looked at the building location and side building he wanted, and I said, I think it fits. And it's fifty feet is the requirement to the building setback and seventy feet to the storage or warehouse portion. So we actually went to the building inspector and asked him with a sketch, does this conform to your zoning? And the feedback we got was that it would and did not require a variance. I think we might need to get that in writing or get another opinion expressed by the building inspector, because that's what we were told, which is why we designed it this way. So my understanding is the fifty foot setback to the building is allowed as long as it's not warehouse or storage.
So that's not in your application as ZVA at this time?
Not at this time, so we're gonna ask them tomorrow to clarify that and make sure.
Time to get that one in there on time.
Now we have to probably, if it has to be a variance, we have to.
Well, I understand. You got your offices.
Your offices are pointing people front and the warehouse and storage area is seventy feet. So that's why we designed it that way. It was our understanding from our discussion that that would be okay. So now we have to just make sure that's.
So you're saying it might not need a variance for that?
That's our understanding, yes.
Right, okay.
Otherwise, we would have certainly asked for that variance or we designed a building.
And that would have been in your application as the zoning board.
Look at that clarified, I think, from the building inspector, and that might address that concern.
Yeah, that would have been something I would have decided last year before I purchased the property, but we'll see.
Well, it's a difficult shaped property, which is well covered by the Board of Appeals. I mean, that's.
We knew it. I'm glad, you know, it's probably, you figured it probably for your use, the only way you could do it without maybe changing it, you know? That size building is maxing out.
Back to the sign, again, not too much for the design of it, but the location of it. Larry had mentioned bringing it more northerly. I think that might be possible, but I don't know if we can bring it to the other side of the driveway.
I'm sorry, Bill, I missed the first part.
The sign location, you had mentioned bringing it more northerly.
Oh, oh, yeah.
More southerly.
Yeah.
Southerly or northerly?
Oh, southerly. Did I say?
I was going southerly, but I said northerly. I think you meant towards the entrance.
Yeah, so that people are not inclined to turn in the exit.
Yeah, we are proposing doing it as a signs here, you know, facing out in an arrow and exit only. You know, on the pavement part of, same with the entrance and narrow end. If we can look at, I don't know if we can move all the way to here because of the grade and because of the trees that were there with the shield, you would see it all possibly at that point. So we're trying to keep it between here and here. So maybe we can move a little closer to the right.
I think we could take a look at that.
It seems that closer you move it to your building, it would be better and maybe if you lift the grade of the entrance a little bit, you can, you know, carve out a little, yeah, right where you pointed, a little corner where you can get the sign there. It just seemed like if you would want it closer to your building, then, you know, that's not very far away, probably a hundred feet from your building. Just my thoughts. And, but my safety concern was making sure people didn't turn in the exit.
Exactly.
I agree in principle, but as you're driving Route One north, as you're coming down that hill, my fear is that if it's too, too much south, too south, if you will, then you won't be able to see it because you're still coming down the hill. Once you level out, then I'll probably have more visibility to the sign. So that's kind of the idea of that location.
You've heard us and now you can just think about it. Anything else, Bill?
Check first. I think most of my, I think we'll be able to handle and address. We did actually do an onsite soil test just yesterday. We had the permission from the conservation to do that, because it's in the watershed protection district. And he didn't want us to disturb any trees and whatnot, so we ended up doing it right behind the house, eight, nine feet off the house. So it's right in this location. We did a test pit yesterday. I can give the results. I can forward them.
Groundwater in the same place, okay.
It came out pretty, yeah, pretty good, within a couple inches. It wasn't exactly right, but just right in the upper part. May have to adjust it a little bit, but I'll just double check on the grades. Actually, I have to take a shot and get a grade, just based on what I saw where it was, based on the elevations that we had. It looks pretty good, but I want to get an actual shot on an actual test that we did. So I'll do that. I'll put that data together along with the, and include on the plans, so that we'll verify or go change if we have to.
All right, you're going for the Zone Two.
Right.
Variance is in special permit tomorrow night. And those, you can see in your, I don't need to, does everybody have a chance to read those? Do you want to briefly state what you're doing tomorrow night? The town at this time still has the issuance, you can explain what, a special permit for the.
For several things.
For the, what is it? What's it called? The groundwater.
The water supply protection.
Municipal Water Supply Protection District.
Which is kind of, it's not, it's not really a locus or a radius now, because it was approved by the state, so it kind of goes according to not only hydrology and soils and so forth, and Bill, the state supposedly, so it does go through this property and kind of exempts some other ones on Route Ones and it's a luck of the, what you're on as far as soils and hydrology.
Actually, the municipal watershed protection district is the whole entire site here. It mislabeled that as the Zone, that's the Zone Two line that is on the plan.
Right.
Which is a different, and.
So the ZVA is the one that.
There's special permit granting authority for that, as well as the one that will be granting any variances requested.
For impervious surface, right?
We got the impervious surface, we got the parking and the, well, with building, we think we're conforming, but we'll verify that. And we also have, just putting this at the store and the setback, we had to answer our variance on that as well.
So, I mean, in general, I mean, with your drainage plans and your stormwater management permits and Larry's recommendations, I mean, it's a fairly clean, I think it's still made a fairly clean sign, I think. There's not really any external pollutants. I mean, we have a gas station right down the street. That's sitting in it as well.
I think that.
And a paint shop across the street.
See, most of these items, some of them were just basically fixing the plans up, some typos and some misplaced labels. We can fix those up. The issues that I need to be able to address are the drainage and a few of those other items that we have very highlighted. And I assume that we'll be able to, hope we'll be able to talk to Larry and sort of directly. I can obviously submit everything we do to the board, but.
Is that okay with the board?
It's okay.
Yeah.
Speak with Larry and Bill to address some of the drainage issues in particular. As we're fixing them, so that we can make sure that we do them.
That's fine. Okay, and I think, you know, pending your, I don't think, you were saying we're not bound, if for some reason someone's management permit gets out of, does that preclude us from closing the hearing at some point and getting the, you know, obviously with the prerequisite to all these other issues that dealt with?
Stormwater permit is not the planning board's purview. It's the conservation commission and they're just kind of borrowing your consultant to review it. And so they're separate entities.
No, but we like to have a tie-in to obviously all the planning that goes with the site plan review in terms of drainage and everything.
Makes sense to kind of all.
Have you, you've already reviewed the stormwater.
Yeah, that's part of this.
Yeah, it's a part of it, so.
Yeah, so that everybody's clear on that.
Mr. Chairman, could I, in light of the fact that the zoning board of appeals doesn't have a technical consultant to help them with their review, and therefore they're basically relying on the planning board's review of this to help them with their review, I was wondering if the board's technical consultant would have changed anything in his review, knowing that he was writing it because this is located in the watershed protection over the district? You know, if there was anything that you could change or add to it, so since they're going to be using our, any decision of ours to write their decision probably.
No, but I take the opportunity, I guess, to ask what the response the applicant might have to some rainwater harvesting, a suggestion of that. Because that's one of the requirements of Municipal Water Safety Protection District recharge, which is what Bill has done and Ted Barry's done for you, but I think that's, that's the way of the future. If we can do that and you're, you use the water, you need the water. So I was just wondering what your reaction would be to that?
I will look into it.
It does work. I mean, you have, it's a requirement for stormwater management.
I think it's a great thing to say to my bill too.
Does it place in place of the information for the roof runoff? Basically, you want roof runoff, water and rain melts with the clean water.
And you've got sixty-five hundred square feet there of roof that you can call on to, you know, to fill your cistern tanks up with. That knocks a good chunk out of your water, Bill, and your water and those plants trying to keep them green, so.
It's too bad it wasn't like ubiquitous in the Ipswich River watershed, you know, from the source on down, it would really, because you see what happens in the summer. Everybody, you know, that drawer of that river for irrigation purposes and for lawn watering and et cetera, just and for municipal water supplies is nothing left in a dry summer. And so if everyone, all commercial, if they all did that, I think that would save quite a bit of water.
How does that change the design if they do have cisterns? Well, I suggest that they didn't need to change the design. If they want to cut back some of it, if they put that, those provisions in, then they can probably cut back some of that because they can count on the recharge by using that water. They can write that off as recharge, as opposed to putting it directly in the ground in these infiltration systems.
Define a good deal with Shay, someone.
Well, you need pumps and lines and things like that. It's concrete tanks. The concrete tanks, they're really not that expensive.
And it's forever. It's a pump. It's little irrigation pumps. You can get a hold of them. All right, I need to go on to the next public hearing.
We need to schedule a site visit and the ZVA would like to share and go on the same site visit as the.
I'm looking at here, anybody have any suggestions? Oh, we can look at it in the context maybe of our next, before our next meeting. The next meeting will be two weeks, it's the second of October. Do you have, Bill, is it better if it's the ninth you'll have everything done? I mean, there's no sense, I don't want to have a meeting and just, you just show up and we have nothing.
Yeah, I'm going back to the competition the first.
So we need to go the ninth. All right, so the ninth?
What's that?
For the next meeting?
Ninth of October, yeah.
Actually.
You can't go the ninth?
Because the first they'll be done.
No, but it won't, it's not gonna be done, because it might not even have it written up. I mean, all I'm saying is that.
Well, you mean as far as me getting my information back to Larry?
Yeah, I just, the intent is to have it all, if you can have it wrapped up, and I could close because there's an appeal period.
Right.
But if we have a meeting and cannot, then it's a waste, it's not a waste of time here, but it may be a waste of time.
Our ninth is, ninth might be doable.
I will be here.
Oh, you're not there on the ninth?
I'm going on from the eighth to the fifteenth.
I just, if you're meeting with Conservation Commission on Tuesday, the first, right?
Correct.
There's a possibility, I mean, you're, it's only two weeks from now. Then you should go, we should go the sixteenth. Because I, the goal, I think, for the board is just to wrap it up.
I won't forget sixteen.
Oh, God.
I'm looking at, we have to.
We can have it the second. You take your chances. I mean, that's, the board, I mean, I don't know, we have much other, we may have to meet the second for various reasons. Why don't we go for the second then, since the ninth and sixteenth are out, okay? Then if it, if not, then obviously, then you're gonna have to extend it anyways, right?
Right.
All right, so we need a site visit before the second.
If we can't get it all done, we'll have to, you know, continue.
When do people want to meet? When is daylight savings time stuff? I mean, either whenever it goes away.
September is gonna be sunset at six thirty.
But we don't change the clocks, right?
That's usually close to Halloween.
November, I think you changed that.
All right, so we're not, do people want to do it after work or on the weekend?
Weekend's okay with me, as long as it's early.
I mean, after work, it's gonna be like a, you know, obviously at five o'clock, right? If it gets dark at six, as Gene said. Or it's dusk.
Either one, that doesn't matter.
Chris?
Five o'clock works, you know, so.
Five o'clock.
Saturday at five o'clock?
Well, that's why people don't have to give up their weekend.
Yeah, right, but it's like a, it's a weekday, I mean, and Wednesday.
Same for you too.
If you said, I heard somebody say early Saturday morning, if you say eight thirty Saturday morning, I'm okay with that. If you say five o'clock, I'm okay. I can be, I will be there as usual.
I just can't do Saturday mornings.
Can we do Wednesday at five?
Which Wednesday? What, the thirtieth?
That works.
That's okay.
Okay.
The thirtieth, the which month?
I got, I was like an answer. I'm sorry.
The twenty-fifth would be this month.
Twenty-fifth at five? Is that what gives us? Thursday the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth is good.
Thursday the twenty-sixth at five o'clock, all right?
Twenty-sixth September.
That's fine with me, yep.
Is that all right?
Five P M.
And then we'll get that done soon enough, you know, that's coming up next week, so.
And should I post this as a meeting? Is there anything that you need to do as business or?
You should post it as a meeting. As part of site plan review is like a.
They can park across the street or down the street. A lot of parking for site is difficult.
No, we can park across the street.
Be careful crossing the street.
No, it's all, yeah, that's true. Crossing Route One is not optimal.
The park is Swenson maybe, if you ran it or something down, UPS walk down would be better.
Or is it that better?
You're honest, right?
Mark a UPS and walk down?
That would be better than.
Or Swenson.
Down across the street by, okay. I would, yeah, I would, I would suggest that people do park.
If Swenson's parks, I'll talk to them.
If Swenson's.
Is much closer.
Yeah. If Swenson's lets us park that way, it'd be great, because they're closed at that time.
Yeah, they close at four thirty.
And that way we don't have, I don't really would prefer that we didn't cross.
They've got that gate, they're second parked in front of the gate.
Right.
Because I get that gate one night.
All right, unless there's any other, any other closing comment, because we really need to go on to the next public, we need to go on. Anything else?
Continue to a certain time date.
Okay, uh, we're continuing this to the second at seven thirty. Is that all right, I mean, you may not have to even.
Yeah.
I mean, we're continuing it, but.
Yeah.
If something, don't wait, I mean, if there's nothing, you know.
We're not ready, we'll let you know.
Obviously, we'll know, yeah, but at this point, it's seven thirty on the second, all right? Well, thanks a lot, it was productive. Uh, this is a, I need to read this thing. At eight twenty here, um, this was supposed to be eight o'clock. This is a notice of public hearing. For registered marijuana dispensary moratorium. Uh, this was advertised, so I'll read the advertising. Pursuant to Mass General law, chapter forty-eight, section five, the Raleigh Planning Board will hold a public hearing on petition of the Raleigh Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, September eighteen, two thousand thirteen at eight P M, again amended to eight twenty at the Town Hall Annex Thirty-Nine Central Street, Raleigh, Mass. Under the current zoning bylaw, our registered marijuana dispensary is not a permitted use in the town. The purpose of this hearing is to provide interest apart as the opportunity to comment on a proposed article occasioned by the new Massachusetts law that went into effect generally first, two thousand thirteen, regulating cultivation, distribution, possession and use of marijuana for medical purposes, the article proposes to amend the town's protective zoning bylaw. They add a new section eight point nine, temporary moratorium on registered marijuana dispensaries to be effective until November thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. The hearing will cover the purpose of this article, the definition of medical marijuana treatment center, and the details of the temporary moratorium proposed for such centers while the town engages in a planning process to address the effects of such structures and uses in the town. The text of the proposed registered marijuana dispensary moratorium bylaw can be viewed planning board office at Thirty-Nine Central Street, Raleigh, Mass, during regular business hours or on the zoning review committee page on the Raleigh Town website at W W W dot town dot Raleigh dot Mass dot U S. Hearing's open. Basically, our job is to simply kind of codify or just vote to approve the moratorium. A lot of towns, as you know, I mean, the papers, obviously, um, the town, this, there are many applicants that are going, that are being sifted through by the state and it's moving forward as far as the applicants, you know, so that people can get permission to do this. But where do they do it, kind of depends on, I guess, which towns are amenable to having their bylaws or having their bylaws in place to allow the, the sighting of them, so. But, I mean, the state is going forward with it, as we know, it can, nothing can preclude from going someplace and I don't think that's the intent, the moratorium to.
I mean, I.
Assist in writing the regulations in the context of our existing zoning, that's all.
I think the only thing I would add is that the attorney general has already ruled that towns cannot take the position that they won't have these facilities anywhere. So, it's a question of, towns can, they can enact a one year moratorium to figure out, to give them time to figure out what to do about it, and they can restrict them to pick particular sections of zoning districts in town. That's what we'll have to do during this year, you know, this.
I mean, we're not that big of a town, we don't, I mean, so, I think this might be, for a town like, um, Haverhill or Lainer, Beverly, for example, it might be more problematic in terms of, um, you know, just they have more, they have fun keeping away from schools, elementary schools and this and that, this and that, so. You know, we're more discreet in terms of.
Right.
But, you know.
Just for example, we could, we could allow this in the retail district, for example, and that's well away from any churches and schools, you wouldn't have that.
Or, you know, or light industry, we have, uh.
Right.
Strip malls along Route one that are far away from. But, um, they have, you know, you can go on the website and it's a very extensive application process for these people that would like to be in the business and have, you know, nonprofit status, go through that screening process and then go into a secondary group. So, it's a real, the state is very careful about, well, at least on paper, it's a very careful process and even, even approving who can have these, if you look at it. And it's also very expensive, you know, it's not someone who can just think that they can do it without a lot of backing monetarily, you know, financial. So, it's a lot of, there's a lot of stipulations, it's kind of interesting, actually.
Given that other, other towns are potentially moving forward and you're thinking about towns like, uh, Haverhill, for instance, because it's pretty close and has a different population size, you know, it's more like, I mean, do you think a moratorium is effectively precluding an applicant from, uh, ever getting the right here in, in Raleigh? Isn't there a limitation on how many can be permitted in each county?
Five in each county, so they figure, you know.
It could be, but I think you're gonna find that a number of towns, I think Raleigh's is a one year, so to speak, right, one year? Was Haverhill's was six months, right? They may have extended, they, they did a six month right off the bat moratorium. I believe, I may be totally wrong, but I know the applications had to be into the state by April. So, those are already ongoing, but I, I think the state needs lead time to implement this law and to screen these. I think that's gonna take a while before they actually have a group of people who can go to the town.
Might just add that today I had a very serious call from, um, one of our largest, um, business landowners here in Raleigh, um, saying that he had someone ready to lease and he was going to be growing marijuana and was it allowed? And I had to explain to him that once the legal ad went in, it effectively stopped that use until the moratorium ended, if it's adopted.
And I think if you look on the website with the state, uh, the growing evidence is even more restricted in terms of, um, who can grow it, why they can grow it, how much they can grow it, so you can go to the state website and check that out as well, so.
They're just gonna be growing inside.
Well, it doesn't matter where it's grown.
How tall fences have to be. It has to be inside?
I don't know, I don't know.
No, it, you can read, there's a lot of things hoops you have to go through to, to actually grow it and sufficient quantities to, um, and whether or not, you cannot really provide it to, if you had a dispensary, you could grow it for your own dispensary, but and the only reason a person could grow it is if they had an exemption that they could not get to a dispensary that could grow enough for themselves, but you can't, from what I read, and I don't know if I'm interpreting, you can't have this centralized warehouse, uh, giving it to a bunch of dispensaries, uh, so.
Really? Well, you have to, each dispensary has to grow their own.
You have to grow your own, right?
Yeah, at, but.
Can't buy it from someone else.
Unless you're, I mean, there's a whole process.
Sure, I mean, there's probably gonna be registered distributors.
Well, if it's for medical, there might be particular.
I think whoever's growing it has to be.
Quantities or kinds, you know, if it's for medical use, there might be particular, I don't know anything about this, but plants or you might have, they have certain ratios of whatever, if it's medical.
Right, but what, what I'm really saying is that the process by the state isn't done, so can't grow it unless you have a license from the state, so until you have a license from the state, I don't think you can grow it.
Yeah.
And that process, if you look, they haven't even gotten into the phase.
So, I mean, so, so the moratorium isn't probably, isn't necessarily gonna prevent that person from moving forward in Raleigh, because he's still gotta wait for the licensing process, you know, so.
I guess it's, the town, I mean, the town can make a moratorium as long as they want, I mean, they could have made it till next May instead of November, right?
They just couldn't make it longer than that.
Right.
Right, they maxed it up to the year, right?
Right.
All right, so all any as a motion and.
Did you want to ask if anyone?
Oh, I'm sorry, is anybody here for the pot, sorry.
Not here for pot.
No, no.
I can tell, I can tell this is a really hot budget, budget issue in Raleigh. Oh, you don't live here, you can't say anything. The cameraman want to say anything?
I live in Georgetown.
All right, so.
The record, the record says that there's no ideas with this public hearing.
Thank you for this input by the public. Emotionally.
I'll make a motion to recommend the town meeting pass a one year moratorium.
Second.
By Damon, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next agenda item is.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have a vote to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimates? We have a, um, well, you're here for the, our, um, approval.
Yeah, nine seventy.
That's right, that's what I thought, um. Yeah, this is, Katrina, you can, Larry, you know something about this? Have you seen this plan? If you look in, Katrina, you want to speak on this, please briefly before we vote? In terms of what our options are here? It's a complicated.
You can move up here if you'd like.
Now, this is in a subdivision approval not required, plans at nine seventy Haverhill Street. J D J Realty, um, this is the property next to Said Abuzar's vacant lot that's next to his developed lot, you know? And I think there was a landscape company, there's always been a couple things up front, a house. There's houses in the back and there's a house in front.
Do you know the property in the back, I'm, I'm the buyer, this is the.
What I'm saying, I'm just trying to just lay out so that I know what we're talking about here, does everybody know what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Gina certainly does.
Did you want me to describe it or do you want him to?
Well, I want you first.
Okay. The important thing to know is that the lot as it exists today is contained in the business light industrial zone. As you know, we have no frontage or area requirements in the business light industrial zone. Um, there's an existing home here and then there's, um, a business with assorted dwelling units and maybe a couple of residential units, I guess it used to be a hardware store?
It's one apartment, yeah.
Okay, um, and, and the owner of this lot actually lives next door here and I guess rents out? Rent. Okay, so she would like to split this lot so that the people that have been leasing this can own it. This will be on a separate lot. They've given this one one hundred fifty feet of frontage and roughly an acre, a little less than an acre for the existing home.
It's a builder's acre.
This business will, um, have eighty-five point nine one feet of frontage. There is a small problem, um, they share this driveway right now. I guess the house also, it loops around through here and they share this driveway with this house, which kind of straddles the lot line. Right now, this is not defined as a common driveway because it's all on one lot. As soon as you split this off, this is now defined as a common driveway and it needs a special permit. But, um, the planning board shouldn't be looking at any zoning violations that occur when they sign, endorse an A N R, they should only be looking to see that it has adequate frontage. Um, and I guess we hope that they do the right thing afterwards. One thing that can get around the fact that this might be a common driveway is that they do have an access, it's half a driveway, you know, this straddles the lot line, so I, I don't know how the board wants to view that, but um, I guess the bottom line is I don't see any reason why they shouldn't endorse it.
Obviously, any further development is going to entail some changes. With, with lot lines that are in the driveway and so forth. That's not something that typically we come across as a driveway that we approve.
Right.
And common driveways have to, you know, but.
Did everyone explain that the?
So, you're talking about, um, this one right here?
Yeah, we have, we, we have in essence three common driveways here. You know, we have one, one going to, you know, for this and one for this and one for this.
The one on that side that was kind of non-conforming.
Yeah.
Common driveway.
All right, shoot, now you can go.
Well, so, I don't know, what do you, what do you?
Well, no, just, what are your plan, I mean, you can, you have anything else to say from what Katrina, I know you two have talked, do you agree with what she said?
Um, yeah, well, I mean, I, I was understanding that from, from my engineer that this was grandfathered in common driveway. That's why he didn't propose a new driveway there.
I don't think we grandfathered common driveway.
Well, there was, we, uh, well, that's a, that's a difficult question because we authorized common driveway, I don't know, fifteen years ago. Prior to that, they were not permitted because they weren't authorized, so I don't know what a grandfathered common driveway is.
No, if I may, I, I actually put a lot of thought into it and I, because it was a dilemma, is this a common driveway that's grandfathered? I came to the conclusion that it wasn't because right now, before the lot is split, it doesn't meet the definition of a common driveway because it's on one lot. A common driveway is shared by two lots, so it only becomes a common driveway when you endorse this A N R.
So, once we split them off.
And so it has no grandfather rights.
See, that makes sense, yeah.
There's a requirement for a special permit, if you're gonna use this as a common driveway. You have to come to this board, actually, you have to hold a public hearing and then give a special permit for the common driveway.
Your plan, so you're gonna buy the back one?
Yes.
And you own the front one?
And I own the front.
Yeah, that makes sense, I mean, it seems to make sense what you're doing in terms of my, my, the history of the whole thing.
I did suggest to the engineer that simply widen these driveway just a teeny bit and we don't have any definition of how wide someone's driveway has to be. Does anyone know of any, we?
No.
So, even if they could fit at least one car, six feet, I don't know how many feet there are right now, but if they just widen it just a bit, then we could say that that is a driveway for this house.
Then you don't come to the lot one. But, I mean, because this gets filed, right? The registry. Larry, do we come in? But we can't, basically, we're approving something that, uh, would create a non-conforming or, or we're gonna create an issue where they would have to come before it's developed.
Only if they used it, they kept, only if they keep using it, it would require a special.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, special permit, so. You understand that?
Do you currently use it?
I'm sorry, what am I using, the one that goes around the house?
Well, I mean. Which driveway is this, is this the driveway you ordinarily use, if this drive, or is this how you ordinarily?
I have a house in, in the rental.
No, it's not.
So, ordinarily you go in here?
Only the rental use it, not, not the.
Rental goes in there.
Not the house rental, rental, house rental uses my driveway that comes through me.
Right here, that's what we're talking about.
Right.
Right.
Oh, the house rental uses.
Yeah, they use my side, they don't use that, so, doesn't it goes up back? No.
So, he, he doesn't have a problem then with the driveway on, on lot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm leaving an easement, I'm gonna have an easement there for them to use that.
I didn't even ask before you speak, oh, you're supposed to say who you are.
Oh.
I'm for minutes in the record, sorry.
I'm Kevin.
We're on TV. Can you give your address and your name, please?
Eighty-nine Viola Circle, Seabook, New Hampshire.
And I'm Joanne Harrington, I'm J D J Realty.
Okay.
And I'm at nine sixty-six Haverhill Street and nine seventy.
What was your last name again, because it was.
Karpenko.
Karpenko.
With a C?
K.
K.
Can you spell that for a minute?
Sure, it's K A R P E N K O.
An eighty-nine Viola drive?
Viola.
Viola.
Circle.
Like, like the instrument?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, you're kind of our expert on A N Rs.
Well, um, you know, the, the only criteria is whether it's a public way and, and it has adequate frontage and, as Katrina pointed out, there is no frontage requirement in this zoning district, so I guess.
Yes.
It's gonna be approved and leave it to the building inspector to worry about whether there are zoning violations.
Larry, does that sync with you, your experience?
Yeah, as far as the easterly driveway goes, you know, the one that's on the property line, that exists as it is today.
Correct, correct.
So, that in fact is grandfathered for its use, however they're using it.
Okay, for the, for the history.
Yeah.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll make the motion.
To approve the A N R?
Yep.
Second.
Second by Gina, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think, you know, Katrina's done a lot of research on this and worked with you.
Yep.
And we know that the building, you know, it's interesting, it's another, we've had a few quirks, had a few quirks, yeah. So, lately, and we haven't had a straightforward one, you know, they're usually pretty. All right, thank you.
Do you want to walk off with this?
Do we have to sign this now?
Yeah.
So, uh, while people are waiting to be signed, they can read the minutes.
And remember, I did add a third page and additional information about the minutes.
That's the top, top space for the chairman. Right.
I guess Chris, sorry, I don't think you're supposed to.
No, I'm not, right.
However, Steve Cassiotes does not fill out one of those Mullen forms for missing the special permit tonight, you get to vote on it.
Oh.
How many of these were in there for your picture, huh?
Just that one, two.
Is Chris on the side?
You got the side, you got the side.
Did you, did you already sign it?
No, but, you get three, no, that's all right, you get three signatures.
Okay.
Is it cap? You wanna sign it?
He doesn't sure about this one anyway.
No, no, I signed it.
Oh, that's why.
Well, he made the motion.
He has to sign it because he made the motion.
Really?
Well, he should. See, you got yourself into that one. Joel, you wanna come up?
Sure.
You scare me when you have this many things.
No, no, I don't, I just, you know what, I always bring the whole flowers.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just bring the chair, then.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, have a good evening, thank you. I should've shown up at the meeting. As you can see, there's, um, some recent, uh, there's a memo from Larry to Katrina dated, uh, yesterday. I guess to talk about, is this a kind of a briefing on the title? The meeting with Ralph and Larry, is that what this is?
Uh, it's a subsequent, uh, meeting with Ralph and, and, uh, in discussion about, uh, the surety that might be posted for remaining improvements on or about completion of what he gets done by October eighteenth, which is his first scheduled closing.
Yeah, obviously, I didn't read what the, uh, this is a project update, uh, discuss sharing possible modification of the residences at Raleigh Country Club.
It's really, it's, it's pretty simple between mine and Larry's, um, letters. What I did is I went through Larry's letter and I went through the conditions and, and, um, basically just went through each of the conditions and told you what we had done, what we hadn't done, so I thought maybe that'd be even easier. And that's what mine memo does, and then I refer, and then I do refer back to Larry, because Larry had indicated perhaps that we would want to amend the special, um, permit. I definitely don't want to amend the special permit because really no need to. And I think that in the body of the agreement, when, when it was drafted by, by Larry and through by this board, you provided for, um, sufficient, if you will, alternative remedy than completion, i.e. the, um, delivery of a surety, because the only things that would not be completed or conditions that would not be complied with were really those that, um, you permit a surety for, so the landscaping, um, you know, some berm or something like that. But all of the essential services, i.e. the installation of utilities, the granting of the easements, the completion of, um, infrastructure that would service these roadways, um, safety issues had all been complied with and will be complied with prior to the issuance of the first occupancy.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah, and I'm gonna go through them and let me, I need to tell you that Larry has never seen this memo and Katrina had sent over, you know, the kind of, after I had had the chance to digest and go through.
This just came today, so, all right, so you can go through it quickly.
It is so easy to go through. So, basically, um, let's, let's do it like this, right? The first and the most major of all conditions because of the OSRD nature was the CR, great news. We got it approved and accepted by the Conservation Commission as well as the Board of Selectmen and been reviewed by Irene Del Bono at the Executive Office. And, um, I provided for everything.
Say the whole thing for the television audience.
Of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Thank you.
Has reviewed.
Otherwise, that one is E O.
It's E O E E A. Let me tell you, I feel like, I feel like McDonald's, uh, oh, McDonald's, anyhow. So, now, I have actually sent to Ms. Del Bono the signed CR, which she will then put in process to get signed. And as I indicated here, so I complied with the first prong, which was to deliver the application, which is why we were able to proceed with our construction. Now, prior to the issuance of the seventh occupancy permit, I must record the CR in addition to the, um, subordination by the mortgage holder. And I did have the, the subordination sign sent over to Irene and I'm ready. Um, I'll be honest with you, it'll probably take the E O, E E A up to six weeks to get that signed and returned to me, but.
This is E on your memo.
Yeah. Well, I'll be, I'll be able to get it done before my seventh occupancy.
But they've already approved the language, right, so, right?
They have, it's, it's a process.
But maybe, uh, maybe after what happened during the application and the reasons why, they might.
She's pretty, she, you know, I, I, yeah, I'll give her credit, she's got a lot of work on her plate, she has a very small staff to review all of these.
I know they cut the staff.
And, um, they're pretty, she's pretty good, she's pretty responsive. So, once she gets it, I have no doubt she'll do it as quickly as she can, but she still has to move it through the proper channels and, and the Secretary Celeste to sign. And they, and they take recording very seriously, I remember reading that email. Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Yeah, and this is on.
Impedant the right person recording.
See, upon receipt of the signature of the Secretary, E O E E A, the Con- Con- Conservation Restriction and Mortgage Subordination will be recorded, evidence thereof will be sent. Katrina and Brent, they, like.
Right.
Corey must take place prior to the issuance of seventh occupancy permit. And, uh, you said that probably will be done, right?
Yeah, it will be done.
Okay.
I can, yeah, I have no choice, whether that means that my closing for the seventh delivery of the unit is, you know, extended, I have no choice.
You guys have sold these, right?
Oh, that's a great news, yeah, I think I told you, we sold eighteen of them. We sold all, all but the two, um, the two models. And so, um, it, it, it was, it was absolutely wonderful news. So, I brought, I, I, well, I'll go through this when we hit the delivery of the conditions, Larry, I don't know.
All right, so go, yeah, before you, don't digress, go through the rest of it.
Okay, so, um, now, condition seven, delivery of condominium documents, I delivered those on April twenty-ninth and the board reviewed and ensured that the restriction regarding all, um, on-street parking was, was contained and, and those were acceptable. As far as the granting of easements to the town of Raleigh, we actually did, um, send back to the Raleigh Municipal Light Plant its easement. Um, it has yet to record it, but I think it's because it's just got to complete the installation. All of the materials have been purchased and are sitting in, in, um, Raleigh's garage. We have all the lights, they're the ones who, we pay for them and then they do the installation, so they're sitting there. Um, with regard to an easement for all other utilities, because this is a private road, the drainage easements will not be conveyed. That would be the full and sole responsibility of the HOA, or if you will, the Condominium Association, as referenced in the master deed, as well as all water line maintenance and all other stormwater drainage, um, issues and the sewer. Um, and this is very unusual because there's absolutely no obligation on the part of the town to do absolutely anything. And the only reason the electric even has, um, any sort of a, um, if you will, responsibility for easement is because they come in and they actually put up their own equipment and their own poles, you pay for it, but it's kind of like renting it almost.
So, they include hydrants?
Hydrants are, we have to maintain them, we'll have to flush them, everything. That's the way it works at a condominium.
All right, so it's just a question of getting those maintenance or those results to the fire department on a timely basis?
Yeah.
I, I was gonna ask about water, water mains because oftentimes the towns want some type of emergency access to mains and hydrants and things.
Oh, I don't mind giving it, it's just that, you know, you don't, there's nothing for the drainage.
No, it's nothing for the drainage, it's nothing for the sewer.
And nothing even for the water lines, because you don't.
I mean, they're, they're shut offs, so they're master shut offs for the town.
Of course, there's master shut off on the street, that's why.
That's what's on the streets, so they can get on the street and do it.
You can shut them right at the street.
Yeah, yeah, but if somebody in that development needs service done underwater at the street for some reason, they, they blow.
They have to call a private plumber, they're not allowed to call the town. It isn't the same as when, like, if you blow, if something happens for you and you call the water department, you can. We don't.
So, if there's a main after, let's say, where everything is sold and recorded and all that.
Sure.
Then if a main breaks, then?
Within the condominium, we have to go in and replace it. We hire a contractor, they come in, dig it up and do what they have to do.
Okay.
It's same like fox medals or big bombs.
Yeah, it's, it's, I'd love it if you wanted to take an easement to do it, but that was never the.
No, I manage a private road and everything.
That was not our agreement, so I.
Even though the town is there quite quickly, we have to pay.
Yeah, exactly. So, that was, um, number three. As far as number four, um, all signage will be approved. We do know what we have to do, most of the signage on Dodge Roads, done, all the construction signage, obviously, is, um, Ralph's doing what he needs to do to get the signage approved, because he has to put up little signs, um, about the open space too. So, that all has to be done, that'll all be completed before the first conveyance. Um, with regard, okay, this is where it comes in. With regard to conditions fourteen, seventeen, on page nine, this is the installation of all landscaping, lighting pursuant to the approved plan. Basically, all the plantings have been ordered for the common space and they're going to be delivered in the next few weeks. Believe it or not, all the landscaping in, if you will, phase one, and I'm gonna go through that on the plan, will be installed. And that means the landscaping in all the back open space, the landscaping to the front that is closest to the units that are being constructed. There's only one small little space that, um, Larry had actually even bonded for, because we don't want to put in that center island that basically cuts the entrance in half, this one, and I say area to be completed. I'm gonna show you to be concerned.
Yeah, I think Ralph mentioned that he doesn't want to tear down a sign with construction vehicles.
Exactly, so he's concerned, especially, you know, you come in with those things that pull big digger machines and
Yeah.
they'll wipe out everything.
Yeah.
So, that's why he's just waiting. And since we have to use this for all of our construction, we're not gonna use the access way unless we actually get, um, some sort of a detail. Um, we don't finish that until we absolutely have to, so we're actually going to bond for that as part of, um, Larry's proposal. With regard to, um, the open space area, that was really the only thing that had been done. So, I'm going to show you, and I'm gonna do it one by one, so all of the units, this is the, um, I'm gonna come back over there too. This is the model, so this, okay, Ethan, okay. So, here we go, right here, this is the model, these are the model units, the two, okay? So, what we had actually already sold is all of these that I had highlighted in green. So, previously, we were only going to do a portion, we're only gonna have this as be phase one, and we weren't going to complete the entire back open space. However, we sold this unit and as a result, decided that it would be optimal to actually, in fact, complete this entire roadway that goes around the, um, open space. Anything that I have colored will be completed. And I only colored open space because, as you know, as I sell each unit, I will complete its landscaping around the individual unit, but not until those are sold. Uh, and we're selling them in all order. The first one to be sold will be number twenty-three, so it's kind of like do, 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 we back and forth for the sales, it's just the way it ended up happening.
Now, if you sell only one, you do the all the landscaping?
Yeah, we have to.
Okay.
It's impossible not to complete the outside. So, and, and they're going to be, we start selling October twenty-fourth, we finish before the end of December, uh, that entire, this, all of these.
Not selling, closing.
Closing, I apologize, yes. And then we haven't even, we, we, we were going to open up phase two, but quite honestly, we thought it best to finish what we have and then open phase two, because these sold, uh, 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 Raleigh is hot, they sold immediately.
Families or?
Hot.
Are, are they families or what kind?
No, they are not, they're mostly.
Professionals.
Older, same.
Yep, professionals, a, a huge combination. Our main competitor for sales is a project for fifty-five and older in Topsfield and people just don't like the idea.
What, at the country club?
Well, not the English comments, but the other one that's located off of the Meadows, do you know that one, where that little golf course is?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, but also, I mean, that's not such a lot.
My other client, believe it or not.
Yeah, but that's.
That's how I know there's.
Yeah, but that looks like a hotel.
Yeah, these are much nicer.
Right.
That looks more like a hotel, that's, that's.
But that's our main competitor.
So, I'm just curious, are there any families with children or is all?
I don't think any.
Essentially, this is a fifty-five and older.
I'm not surprised at all, because I said that, this would sell.
Uh, you did, you know what, and I, I gave you credit last night, not last night, but Monday night, to the selectmen, because they are beautiful. They are, the cement, just, everything about them is beautiful. The side entries and some garages.
They, they look much nicer than the ones over in Topsfield, I think, they do.
You, you did, and I, I did, I gave you credit for the selectmen, because we didn't come in with, you know, those designs, you worked on us and.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, listen, you give credit where credit's due. So, they, they are doing very well and we have sold those.
What's the, what's the full schedule on phase two?
Believe it or not, we think we'll be able to complete by, um.
Next fall? So, likewise, so you had, you did.
I hate to say that, right?
You did it this time period, then a like, like time period for the second phase.
That's what we're assuming, potentially even quicker.
Depending on, depending on, depending on the, on the weather and the winter.
It's possible to have it done even faster in the second phase, because.
Well, let's not talk about that now, I wanna get out of this meeting.
Yeah. So, so what we've done, so then the requirements under conditions, okay, so here, here we go, so I wanted to make sure I told you. So, now, we flip to my next thing.
I saw the million ice stone wall today.
Yep, we're, we're, so, exactly. So, what we had to complete before, um, the first conveyance, obviously, is our, our on-site septic system, right? And that will be done, it will be, it'll be, it would be helpful, right? It will be started and there will be a certificate of compliance. But what I, I know that that's silly to have put in, but I wanted you to know all the conditions. So, then the fire access road gate, that was actually approved when we had one of our meetings with the fire department and he knows what we're doing and, and approved the type of gate, because it's one of those gates that are locked and popped, so that's been done. Um, with regard, okay, now, the big one is, and Larry, this is the one where we, we should talk. Conditions twenty-two A through twenty-two E, so that, that pertained to units one through six and units thirty through thirty-six and twenty through twenty-nine. And then twenty-three A and B, and this pertained to, um.
Pages ten and eleven.
Yeah, this pertained to the remainder of the units, I should've put twenty-nine and thirty in the other one. I mean, twenty, twenty-nine and, and, uh, twenty-three. So, basically, the owner is developing, um, all thirteen units in the first phase under the, the, um, approval. Then there's that second phase, which involves units seven through nineteen, we're not, we're not doing any in that one. So, right here, seven through nineteen, seven through nineteen, we're not doing any of these. This, this right here. None of these are being done, and that's the second, that's the second phase, believe it or not. Because what we thought was going to happen is people, we were gonna sell our first entrance phases, that didn't, you know, we, we decided not to do it like that. So, this phase, nothing is being sold. Now, as part of phase three, we are selling some of them and we're complying and, uh, and finishing all of the infrastructure related to phase one and all of phase three. We are doing that.
Are you able to loop the water that way?
Everything will be looped, yes, it will be, because what we will do, and that was, I think, what Larry was concerned about.
So, temporary loop and then he'll change it?
No, we're gonna do a full loop.
No.
We're coming in, we're gonna come in, because we have to loop the water.
Right, right, right.
It would be atrocious to try and do it. So, all of the utilities will be done, everything will be connected, we'll even probably have, may not complete all of the stone like you would put in the gravel base for the road, but you better believe we're gonna have the, the, um, piping and the watering, because we have to connect it, we have to do our loop.
Right, you would think, I mean, that's basically what you do first, no matter how big the subdivision is.
It doesn't make sense not to. It doesn't make sense not to.
Because even.
So, we're gonna go in.
Then infrastructure gets done, electrical and then later.
Whip it up, yeah, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it.
Underground, electrical and all that.
That's what I mean, so with regard to all of that, we actually are completing all of the infrastructure, all of the landscaping in this area here. If you'll notice, though.
Around the open space and the, the.
Everything, exactly, everything I drew in color is going to be done, and I did that on purpose, so it's easier to visualize.
They need some, I mean, they need some work, it's, it's, it's.
It's, it'll be done by the end of the month, but now they're focusing on it.
It's like a beach, you put some.
Yep, so, what we have is, we've completed, all of the drainage structures are there and they are complete. Now, they're just being, um, basically landscaped, like I said, we're getting all of our plants in the next couple of weeks, they'll all be planted.
It's a good time to do it.
Yep, the walkway will be put in, as you can see, it's the walkway that actually leads from where the units have been constructed all the way up through the, I call it, the back open space. Will be done, all of the landscaping, the back open space will be done, all of the landscaping south, oops, of the stormwater detention areas will be done. Where we won't have it done is in this area and it's because it's constructions on.
Is there gonna be some winter stabilization there, is it for winter conditions?
We're gonna work it through.
Probably, probably.
You still, but, but it'd be made provision.
It depends on what they get, September, October.
But that's what I'm saying, even if you're working, I'm not saying if you're not working, you still have to get, you know, for winter conditions, it's usually a little bit more harsh in terms of runoff and.
Oh, oh, of course we will, I see what you mean.
Stabilizing, uh, stockpiles, they, you know?
Oh, we most certainly will, we're hoping to get rid of a lot of the stockpiles.
But this is all gonna be finished where she has colored.
Right, I've got time, it's only September now, so.
Well, let me tell you, and they're cranking, I mean, if you, if you, if you come down. Well, let me tell you, and they're cranking, I mean, if you, if you, if you come down.
I'm gonna.
I see it all the time, yeah.
You see, they are just.
It looks great, yeah, and they're moving.
It's a pretty.
They are. So all of this is done, will be done, and the only thing for the, the, the landscaping that won't is that one island that Larry identified.
Okay.
Then the turnaround, we actually did a full turnaround, we aren't, we weren't even gonna bother with the temporary turner, um, temporary hammerhead turnaround. We actually did the full to go around the entire island again. We had a home up here, it was incumbent upon us to complete. And we did complete those parking spaces, so anything, again, any kind of an improvement that I colored has been done. So those parking spaces also have been done, so that people have a place for visitor parking as well. In this area, here's the front part, so all of this area will be done too. Remember how we had that visitor parking that we created? That will be, everything's going to be done.
Well, obviously, part of your goal is to make for the people who are buying in their closing audience, to make the environment as.
Happy, and when people come to look at the models to buy in the second phase.
Well, as complete as possible, I mean, I noticed, you see the units over in Lenfield, you know, that.
Windsor Court.
The ones that are being done by, well, by the marketplace.
Oh, oh, yeah.
There's tons of units over there, by the way. And, and that way, I mean, it's like people are moving into uncom, you know, incomplet, there's no. It's just like, yeah, if you go down there sometime, you kinda see when people rush to move into something, it's not complete at all, it's.
Oh, this is gonna be beautiful, because what's been done is complete.
Buy this week construction.
Right.
It's, it's, again, I give you credit, it's winter conditions, so. Then we didn't, you know, as we said, we installed all the utilities in binder for the driveway A, and in fact, the utilities will be all the way done. The only thing that won't be done is like some of the transformers will be dropped and things like that for electric, but the water will be connected. And then obviously onsite sewage disposal, piping, manhole structures, pond, stormwater, all will be done prior to the first conveyance. The stormwater system, as you well know, part of it are the berms on the roadway, so the roadway that hasn't been constructed, those berms aren't in, but all of the facilities will be. Then as far as condition nineteen twenty-five, improvements along Dodge Road, I think you probably have all seen that we are beginning, and you said, you know, the road's being put in, I mean, pardon me, the storm, the wall.
It started today, right?
Yeah, so all of that, they're working on it now. A lot of the signage has been put in place, I know they have scheduled the striping to happen, because remember, we're supposed to put the double stripings, so that will happen, I believe, next week, you know, weather permitting, it will continue. It sounds like this week will be beautiful, hopefully, next week will, and they'll be able to complete. Also, we absolutely will be delivering foundation as-built plans, which Mr. Graham suggested we deliver, to prove out, remember the twenty feet? We could have five homes that were twenty feet from the actual driveway, all homes had to be separated by the twenty-five. So every foundation as-built for all of these have already been delivered, believe it or not, to the building inspector, and I can get copies to you just to verify, or to Larry, whomever you prefer, you should tell us to give to Larry, so Larry, he'll get you copies. But we do have foundation as-builds for every single one of the foundations in, which are all of them. And I'll get them to him, and the building inspector does check it. So that was with regard to all of the compliance. So I don't believe we need to amend the, the special permit at all, and again, we aren't looking to, we're more than willing to satisfy what your requirements are. Now, with regard to the Form S, which is the tripartite, by the way, Katrina, this is the, I just figured maybe I should give it to Katrina. This is the form that Rowley Municipal Light had us sign in return to them. Who knows where it, where it is with them, but they have the signed one, so at least you can have the form that we delivered. Okay.
Before you go on, can you stop at that for a minute? Yep. Take a deep breath.
I, I agree that I don't think the board needs to modify the special permit approval conditions, but I think that the board needs to have something other than the way you just described it and put forth in this memo, more in line with what I described, because what you approved was three different phases, and what they built, and you, and the way the decision is written, you can approve it to be built in a different way. In, in four phases, or two phases, as I've done, it didn't have to conform to the third. But I think there ought to be some paper trail that's a little more explicit than what you outlined here, which I have done, that defines the two phases versus, or at least phase one, and what we think is gonna be phase two. And I think you can do that within the board's action as, an action, a letter of understanding or, or something. I don't think you have to modify the condition, but I think you, you need to redefine.
No, it's just, it's just the clarification of, of the wording.
Yeah, the clarification of, of the way the project is unfolding, the way it's been.
Now, well, okay, that's one issue, the other issue is surety.
Yeah, but that's what we were going into, but I, I just.
I, 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 I'm fine with that.
I don't know if anybody's, has read this, but I, I think if you just adopt this as a, a, an understanding or a board understanding, board, I don't know what you call it.
I mean, all the conditions, I'm glad to see the conditions are being met, and we have adequate surety, and that's why I'm chairman, I mean, don't you think that's a priority?
Yes.
The conditions are being met, and we have adequate surety.
I mean, I, I.
If, if the applicant chooses to modify, that's it, they're only, that's, if they choose to do that, that's their right.
Yeah, and, and you, the way the, the.
I'm not gonna force them to do it.
Decision was written, it says, whereas the developer proposes a phase of construction, other units within the project, only phasing shall apply to the development. Well, that's what we wrote, is three different phases. Unless otherwise approved by the planning board, so I think all you need to do is make a motion to accept the build-out as it has developed.
Transpired.
Yeah, as it has transpired, based on this word.
Now, how, how is that different from what the special permit says?
Or, or. I did, I did read that.
You just, you just write it.
What about condition number twenty-eight? It says that all improvements must be in place according with the approved site plan drawings, and the construction phase and conditions set forth elsewhere here, and in lieu thereof, the owner applicant may post surety with the town in the amount to be agreed upon by the board to cover remaining improvements. The nature of such remaining improvements may be finished pavement course, landscaping, and the like. And it says that, to cover remaining improvements.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to the surety to cover, we haven't gotten to that yet, but.
Katrina, what, yeah.
I think her point is, is you really don't have to take any action, because you're covered in twenty-eight. I, I, I mean, with all due respect, I understand what Larry's trying to do, I just don't think you need to do anything or take any action, because once you do, I, I, I just think you're.
I don't think so. I don't think we should take any action, just take adequate surety that the project gets completed according to the site plan.
Because we are completing everything for phase one and phase three, even though we aren't selling those units, we're completing them.
That's why we're taking it, so.
I'm not even looking for leases for everything in.
This is better than what we were asking.
Oh, yeah, it's much better.
Because we're moving fast.
Right.
So, so more is getting. Larry, go to the surety discussion, please.
Go.
I think that's the most important thing, is that we really, that's what they have to agree to, because in the past.
I just, I'm a little confused by, I just have a question. It says recommends a surety of one fifty-one, the actual final number is one twenty-three, and then there's a thirty percent contingency for prevailing wage, but anyone you doesn't apply to private.
One fifty-one didn't get changed, excuse me.
Oh, that's why, okay.
That should be one twenty.
I apologize, I just thought. And then prevailing wage does not apply to private development. It only applies when you're actually going to take property, and you're.
That's why he put it in there, because we've run into that before.
We just ran into it, right?
Yeah, but you did, on which, on a road that was in a subdivision, a real subdivision, not privately owned.
Yeah, but still.
No, you'd be working on a privately owned property. So if there was an excess that needed to be paid in, it's the private landowners who pay it, because it's completely their property, one hundred and twenty percent of property, if it's even possible to be.
Well, what if the, what if the owners default on the whole development?
But, but don't forget this, you're doing this to protect them, you are not doing it to protect the town.
Not, not, that's another case, I understand what you're saying, I totally.
So, but it doesn't.
It comes down, who's named in the tripartite, if it's the town, the town has to take the money and finish it, and therefore use prevailing wages.
You do not have to finish it under a tripartite, by the way, you have the option of doing so.
Right, but.
So what do you, so.
But the way.
If we, if the town decides to finish it, 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 it becomes a town project, and the town has to pay prevailing wage.
Or you can basically tell the homeowners association, look, we have money set aside, we're not going to release it from the developer until it's done, and we have the right to attach, and then they can actually complete it, which is what would end up happening, because if they.
Ah, that's not easy, yes.
No, we, I'm not going there.
I don't like, ah.
I don't wanna go there.
I, I'm telling you.
We've already been there, we've been.
A homeowner's association is never going to allow you to do prevailing wage there, because they would be responsible. If this went belly up, and a developer really couldn't do it, they would.
Well, then fine, we can always release it, I would rather have it.
I, I don't disagree, I'm just telling you, thirty percent contingency is supposedly.
And if you do this, this is gonna be released sooner than later, okay? This is not gonna be, based on the aggressive schedule you just.
I mean, we're gonna be done, and also, you actually, I, I, I'm not gonna really argue, that's vehemently about a thirty percent, because we're gonna pay it down almost immediately, but I am telling you that there will never be prevailing wage.
Well, I'm just saying, but as a board, I would rather be conservative. Because based on my experience, even in my short experience as chairman, there's reasons why I wanna be conservative.
Yeah, see, I just took something in Georgetown, we completed it non-pervailing, non-bid.
I, I don't, okay, that's fine, all in good, I'm just telling you where I'm at, as a chairman.
That's fine. And then my other thing was, is Larry, I'm curious, why did you put by two minutes paving top course? Because all of the conditions say to binder, I just was, I was kinda surprised by that. I mean, I have the money. The way it works, right, just to let you know, I have a term, I have a term note that allows me to complete all the construction money, so in my budget for the bank, I have the money to put on the top coat. I was just surprised that this was a condition, because in the, I could understand, maybe, once we did phase two, and you, before you wanted to release like the last lot or something, but we're only required to go to binder in all of those conditions. So I just didn't, you know.
Jen, you wanna answer that question?
But that's what it says in the conditions.
Generally, that's what you have left, and that, if, that is what is, is taken as surety.
Yep.
It's your service course, your top course.
I couldn't agree more, however, because this surety is really intended to secure the delivery of phase one, and phase one only has to be to binder, because we know we're not doing top coat till we actually can, can complete construction on the other. That's why I thought you drafted the conditions, because it specifically says under the condition, you only have to go to binder.
Yeah, but the surety is for both phase one and phase two, so.
Well, no, but the, it's not all of phase two, it's only part of phase two.
Well, yeah, what you outlined tonight.
Yeah, exactly, in order to, not the final, so that's why I was kinda surprised, if I were coming in.
It's even mentioned in the last line of twenty-eight.
Right, but that isn't.
Maybe finish pavement course.
Right, but that's including all of the, of the surety, like if I were at the end, because if you look to what I'm supposed to complete in just phase one, I only need to go to binder before I get, I, before I can get my release, so on, when we drafted the.
Before you get your releases, if you have your surety posted for the finish course.
No, that's not what it actually said.
I don't think so.
Oh, definitely not, because if I wanted.
How can you do this? You can't do it this way.
Yeah, definitely not.
We do that, we do it every, every subdivision, every.
That's the point, subdivisions, that's why. I agree one hundred percent, but you're also looking for only releases for twenty lots. I still have the rest, and if I were going for my release for the rest, then I would a hundred percent agree that you have to, you have to bond for buying, for a top coat, but you're not.
Well, suppose the rest doesn't get built?
That's the point.
If the rest doesn't get built.
That's why, that's why it's there.
I, I, that was.
Jill, I wouldn't argue this tonight, if I were you.
Yeah.
I, I was asking, to be quite honest with you, like, that's why I prefaced this by saying the term note has it. I'm just telling you, your, your approval does not contemplate that, but I, I, that's why I said, my first words were, the term has it.
Based on your aggressive schedule, you're gonna be into us to get this stuff from you.
It seems to me the idea of the surety is to complete everything, so.
Only when we do.
Surety for everything.
Again, I just wanted you to be aware that.
No, I see your, I see your point, because.
I don't care about this, like I told you, the amount, I have it, I have it in my term note, I can't draw against it anyway. So I'm more than willing to have the bank reserve. That was kind of it.
All right, Larry, it says.
No, yeah, I'd, I'd like to just talk, is there any question about the phase one items?
Absolutely not.
Okay, how about phase two, because you said, you said, you said in phase two, did you say you were gonna put the water line in for, Ralph didn't?
He told me he's looping.
Okay.
If he does, we'll.
If he does, then this is gonna come out, the second item, item seventeen.
Yeah, yeah, but, okay, then we'll just do the release of surety, no matter what, like.
And the tap will come out.
Yeah, I'd rather keep all of that, trust me than I tell you, I'd rather have it all in, and then after I sell, we'll release, I don't care.
Have an adequate sum, and then just release it.
Well, I don't think that this has to be finally decided until sometime shortly before October twenty-fourth, or eighteenth, when it.
Well, because they meet, I don't know what your schedule is going to be.
We're meeting on the second, and then after that, I'm.
Yeah, so I'd almost rather you tell me, you know, I don't mind bonding for all that, even if it's, I have no issue, that's why I said in the beginning, I've got it in my money anyway.
We're meeting, okay, we're probably meeting on the second, and then the twenty, twenty-third, and that'll be after their first closing, so you need to do it tonight, Karen.
We have no objection to it.
No, I know, again, no, I've been, I was giving authority, I was giving authority for one twenty-three, you can't blame an attorney for trying.
I, I know, you know, it gets nine fifteen, and we have other stuff we need to do.
I know, I was here, I came, I was in Georgetown first, so.
No, you had a good comprehensive presentation, I appreciate it, as always.
I just, Katrina, would you like that for your file?
Oh, I would love it, I'll put it up on the wall.
No, I appreciate it.
Oh, you're so snappy.
It's great, and so the communication is adequate, you, from your site visit.
Oh.
Yep.
I really enjoy, I mean, the communication is good, I appreciate it.
Larry comes out when they, we meet him all the time, we, we have absolutely no complaints about that at all, believe me. Do you, so, I have the Form S, with your permission, I'm going to then include in the Form S Larry's surety information. So I include Larry's surety information, I can't even open my page. I could do it tonight, I could handwrite it in. Here, you would sign, I would get the bank to endorse, and then I would deliver back to you.
Can we do this on the second?
You can, whatever you want to, it doesn't have to sign, right?
Complete it.
Yeah, complete it, and then we will sign it on the second, all right?
And then what I did do, here's the release.
You wanna get on the agenda on the second?
Yes, please.
You wanna do, you wanna change, can we do that? No, we can't, it's already fifteen, to seven thirty, I should have put Jill in.
Oh, I don't mind, whenever you want, you can, you know, you can leave it there, Katrina. Katrina, that's the Form S, and then.
I can sign it later, Jill, if you can, come in at seven thirty, because this won't take long.
Absolutely. So I'm just, I'm just gonna go, I'm gonna take your information, I'm gonna download it, I don't care if something's even been done, we'll release later, because we'll do the draws anyway.
Jill, it's up to you, we're gonna put you on for eight, but if you come in early, we'll just do it.
Yeah, whatever, I'll come in at seven thirty, without a doubt. Katrina, those are just files that I have.
On the second, all right?
Absolutely. And what I'll do is I'll bring it, make the bank endorsement, so that you can see it, because I'll bring in the releases so that I can sell those lots. Did everybody get a copy of that? Did you get a copy of that, Katrina?
That's the letter.
From me?
Yeah, I gave it to her.
I threw it at you?
That's good, no, I want to, okay, just, no, I want to make sure it's in the right time.
I understand.
Yeah, because otherwise.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Larry, anything else?
No.
Thank you very much for going out with that.
And I'll, I'll definitely get a hold of Ralph, because I wanna go up now, I'm surprised I have, I just wanna see the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, if you, you can call Katrina, schedule a time, and I can, or you can call Ralph.
All right, sure. I haven't done a site visit, I've looked over the fence.
They wouldn't do it, okay, can we do it together?
Yeah, because just to let you know, Brent Hayes, I did walk the entire perimeter to verify that baseline report, and I, I do have a real.
All right, so when I get a hold of.
Maybe, uh, the twenty-six will do it, like, four, and it'll go over to the other.
On that really hot day. I have fully, I have a full copy of, do you have a full copy of the baseline report?
No, you know what, unless the board really wants it in their files, Brent, Brent has a copy.
Brent does.
The selectmen have a copy, probably, do they?
Yes, a full set.
I, I don't need a copy.
Okay, I did deliver it to you, though, you see, I was everything.
I have them all in the computer files, so that's enough for me.
Yes, you do. Okay. All right, so I will see you all on October second, for Sunday, nineteen.
Because like I said, if you get in, you're, you're on at, at eight, but if you come in at seven thirty, I'll get you done by then.
Wonderful, I appreciate it.
I know you're doing it every night. You're meeting in Middleton now.
Oh, I'm cranking, yeah, I've got it everywhere.
No, you haven't, you haven't had any nights off.
Oh, yeah, tonight I'm done, thank God, I'm tired.
You haven't, you haven't had any nights off?
Usually Mondays, but this week it was, it was your selection.
Crazy, yeah, that's true. All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much, Larry, thanks again.
That was good, thank you. All right, Hawksworth, do you have anything to say briefly on Hawksworth, except that they're not ready?
I can't believe I'm here.
You can't?
I, I really tried, they said they wanted it accepted at this fall town meeting, and I.
Katrina's been really helping ferret the truth, and then.
I, I actually hunted down, and we, I did receive several letters too, in regards to the subdivision.
But instead of going back, what's the status right now?
They're, they're not gonna be ready, they're not here tonight, they, they haven't, they don't have any letter from the water department, we need a sign off from them. We did get sign offs from health, because I asked for one, a con con, there's, they have outstanding order of conditions too.
Oh, they do?
Right. So they, and they don't have sentence plans.
They don't have a certificate of compliance yet. They don't have a certificate of compliance yet.
No, not that the planning board, and I know the planning board likes to hold off, but I don't think legally they may.
Well, I think that's precedent.
Can't hold off for, uh, order of condition from another board.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to, as a convention, don't you think they should have their sign offs from other boards before they accept a vote? When you run into problems with ongoing issues, especially since things are construct-. Something like Cindy Lane and some of those where it was done like one house one year, another house the next, five years later, and I was like.
I guess the bottom line is that, they're not here, and so we really can't do anything, uh, they had to at least be here to, to tell us where they, they, they stood and, and the town warrant closes in two weeks.
Right, by September thirtieth.
We haven't even seen acceptance plans, they have to be approved by town council.
And we have no, we have no meeting between now and then.
Well, I've, I've seen the street acceptance plan, and I've seen a revision to it, and that's all done.
For Asbills. I thought you saw Asbills.
And the street acceptance plan, and, and they, they revised that to my satisfaction, I don't have a meets and bounds district.
What's, what's the date on that?
Uh, my letter is June twenty-fourth.
And you have that in there?
Yeah, but you know, you have to have the whole package.
They, there's a revised plan, uh, August eighth.
Contact first.
But it's, the plan is done as far as I'm concerned.
Man, I mean, Katrina, I think has tried to outline what the package, the necessary package would be, uh, 'cause I've been in contact with you, Katrina Bumpets, and you're really trying to help.
Um, and, and we did get letters, on, on a humorous note, I, I asked the fire department, and I use the language from the rules and regulations, um, that the fire board of engineers needed to sign off on the fire alarms, um, Hawksworth Ave, and Jim Broderick, fire chief, Jim Broderick, emailed me back and said, well, um, we haven't had a board of fire engineers for over ten years, and we don't even, um, ask for fire alarms, or fire alarms are only in the downtown area, I guess, do you even remember, uh, the board program? Actually, when I moved into Wilson Pond Lane, there's a fire alarm box on the first pole.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we quit that, we stopped.
They don't reach this, that far, though, okay?
No, no, we used to have them put them lines in and fire boxes for the event of tying the whole thing together.
With phone lines, and stuff?
Yeah.
So, so that's another good reason that the board needs to spend time on their rules and regs and go over them, and put all those old, um, antiquated regulations.
Want to taste the whole burns down?
Um, we did receive a sign off, it's okay as far as the board of health, the highway department, the municipal light plant, uh, water department's an important one, though, and we haven't heard from them.
All right, so, there's, nothing, that was just really F one, that was for information of the board.
Let's continue the job.
Um, we have, we have an important, well, we're, we're not continuing anything, okay, there's nothing to continue, that's up to them, um, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
If they come in on the second, can they still get on the warrant, or is it?
The warrant closes September twenty, I think.
They may, they.
And town council needs time, usually towns have a process set up for street acceptance that starts nine months before a town meeting, to give everyone enough time to review all the information.
These last minute things rarely work out unless, um, um, everything else is in place and it's just a small, and I know that they have made exceptions with the warrant, kept it open a couple more days, yeah, extending its circuit. I'm not gonna speak for them, but I mean, I, I don't know, and it's usually because of things that the selectmen need to, you know, budgetary items, you know? But I think the next thing, speaking of budgetary items, it's a good segue, um, we don't necessarily, I, I would like to take a vote on, uh, establishing, you know, the revolving fund. People read, you know, do you wanna give it like a two-minute thing on?
Sure, um, I don't, I don't know if the, the board members have read this several times now, because it's been on the staff report several times, starting like last spring. Um, it, it's just a good idea, I think, for the planning board to have another revolving account, they already have one for the technical consultant fund. Um, other boards, like the zoning board of appeals, um, conservation commission has a different kind, but you, you have a revolving account that all application fees are deposited into, and then you're limited, you can spend a li- up to a limit of, say, four thousand dollars a year out of those just to defray the cost of the meetings and the applications, that means legal ads could be paid out of it, you can, supplies can be paid out of it, some can be used to hire consultants, other than what the technical consultant fund is for. In other words, you wouldn't need a planning board consultant line item anymore, you could actually use those funds if you wanted to, um, hire a traffic consultant even, or some other kind of consultant, so I think it's a good idea, and, um, the town has approved other such revolving accounts, and so I, I kind of, um, looked at what language is necessary and, and drafted up a, a sample, um, I have a limit of five thousand dollars. I'm not sure what the finance committee will approve, or the board of selectmen will approve, if they approve it at all, and also, like you said, I realized too late that they can't approve things like this at fall town meetings, 'cause it's a special town meeting, so, but I, I'd really love the board to just make the motion and send it to the selectmen and have it put on the spring town warrant, so it's done.
Who, who's funding this revolving fund?
The application fees are just deposited into it, so in the beginning, there'll be nothing in it, it builds.
I thought they had to go into a general account, the application.
Well, they have been.
I thought they had to, no, that's not.
No, if, if you have a revolving account and it's, um, it's, uh, Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half that allows.
And, and the, and the planning board would be in charge of spending that, but.
Yup.
Well, not all of it.
Of course, whenever they spend it, that, that, that expense sheet goes and the finance committee looks at it, I think the selectmen sign off on it, so other people are looking to see what we're spending the money on, and there's a cap on it.
Right, and it still becomes town, it still becomes part of the town funding.
And any excess over the limit goes into the general fund.
Yeah, excess, that's what, that's what I mean, so they still know what their budget is, based on what our budget is.
Does the town treasurer still fund the, uh, the planning board with, you know, for those expenditures otherwise, I mean, if, if.
You mean an expense fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll still have an expense fund, but we won't need as much, because we, we spent too much last year, too.
Oh, okay, so, we're, we're really taking away from the town revenue by, because it's not going to the general fund, uh, so the finance committee, I'm sure, is gonna have some say on that.
Right. But I guess with the planning board, each year, you never know how, uh, how much, uh, how much money you need from year to year, and so last year, we didn't have enough money,
Mm-hmm.
and, and so it's, it's kind of a, a hassle to ask for, transfer in May, the month of May, to transfer money over from one budget to another, if you have it. Um, and this way, we would know that we had the money there, ZBA has it, and they don't really use it too much, it just sits there.
And we don't necessarily use it, I mean, we're not necessarily going to go over what we spend now, it's just, it's a flexibility issue.
There for them to use.
I, yeah.
So we don't have to go at the end of the year and fill out, the last couple of years, we've had to, uh, get transfers from the reserve fund or and or layer, or, or the technical consultant fund, and we've had to make these requests, now, we can continue to do it that way, but this gives us more flexibility, for example, if there is a larger expenditure in the office function, that isn't covered by our expense line item, which is only twenty-nine hundred bucks.
Mm-hmm.
And since we take in quite a bit of money in our fees, you know?
I guess as, as the person that's working in the office, it does make my life easier, too, it's, um.
So, but if the fees exceeded the four thousand we can spend each year.
It just goes into the general fund.
Oh, it does go to the general fund, it doesn't, it doesn't stand revolving, okay, okay, I got you, all right.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 no.
Yeah.
So I think, I'll. Technical fund is.
That's separate.
That's separate.
But that comes from people paying for the tech, technical.
No, no, it doesn't, it's town.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Yeah, they, people pay in, into the technical fund to pay me.
Right, but that's separate, but we also have some, we've always had a separate budget for a technical review consultant, that's revolving.
And you know.
But that's all funded by the applicants.
No.
No.
Every year, there's like, there's always.
That's not, that's not a revolving.
It's like fifty-five hundred bucks.
And if we get this approved, I would like to suggest that the planning board approve using it for legal ads, rather than having someone pay a thousand dollars for a site plan review fee, and then having to pay the legal ad too, um.
Well, unless we, uh, do a, unless we do a really, we haven't had time, and we haven't had the planner time and or our technical consultant time to really review our rules and regs, to get some kind of, um, uh, what's the word, proportionality to, you know?
The fees.
Oh.
Well, what's.
What did you say, no, it's reviewed, the rule?
No, I'm saying to really pass it, to get it, no, no, I, I brought it with me again, I still have a big one.
Oh, oh, okay.
Client, but clients expect to pay the legal, the legal ads, most communities, you don't.
No, but I agree.
I guess what I, what, what bothers me sometimes, what is the fee for?
Well, that's a, that's a discussion I'm not gonna get into at nine thirty right now.
It's not the legal.
Okay, well, yeah.
But it's not, it's not usually the legal ads.
Oh, it's your salary, among other things.
Right, but.
That's what the town perceives as, but I think there has to be some parity, there has to be, we have run into, I totally agree with Katrina, and I've seen this even, in what it ends up being, you have this expensive fee, but then there's, you know, then there's, uh, review consultant fees, and then there's, uh, fees for the conservation commission, and there's fees for, it goes on and on and on and on, so.
But the only way around it is to change the fee schedule, so perhaps we're not telling them to pay the legal, but we, we are collecting more upfront, so, I mean, I think that anytime they have direct responsibility to pay it, rather than, I mean, they, they, they're only paying for what they're, they're using when they're paying the legal fees, as opposed to some arbitrary number that we estimate to cover it, I imagine we'd always overestimate.
I think it just should be proportional to the size of the project, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, right.
That's all.
I see.
There are some projects, I think a thousand is way too little, to be honest.
Right, and some of it's way too much.
Right, that's all, and I see.
Sure, I mean, I.
It's just like the way building permits are issued, you know, they're proportional to.
To the pro- project, sure.
And, and, and the expen- and, and the cost of the project, and so.
I think there's some issues that we're, I think we need a special meeting to go over, this is one of those issues, isn't it?
No, that's a good point, all right, the second, we're gonna put it on, we're not, I'm not gonna take, I really need people to look at the amounts, I want feedback either through email or to Katrina. Well, you know, like you had some good question, like, what do you think is a fair, Katrina has, she's set the table for us, we have to eat it.
Oh, you mean the, the revisions to the rules, I guess?
We're talking about fees.
No, in terms of the word, yeah, in terms of, think about revolving account, in terms of, you know, I think you have to be, not, not only whether or not it's a good idea, really, to make a decision, I don't wanna shove a boat down people's throats, I think it's a good idea, just because I do, I'm not, I mean, I can take a motion, but I think people need to read what Katrina has written.
Why is it a good idea, 'cause it, it, it's just easier to administer for you, or?
Not easy to administer, it, it opens the door, it allows, um, the planning board access to money so that, um, for, eh, so that if they wanted to hire a consultant to do a traffic study, or, um, you do have the planning board consultant fund too.
Right, so, so how would this be an approval?
But we usually ask the applicant to do those things, yeah, and the applicant.
Right, but there's some cases, like when you wanted to review the zoning board of appeals, um, review.
Yeah.
It's just on a, some occasion, it gives us flexibility that we know it's, I, I don't think it's gonna be invoked all that up, you know, I mean.
No, it won't, it won't be.
Well, let's look at it and.
Look at what Katrina's written, really, she's done a great, she's really a fantastic, like, setting, no, why we're, why we can do it according to statute, how we can, how we should do it, and.
I guess I'd like to suggest, you could, you could vote it down tonight, too, but it's, it's been on, on the staff report for a time.
Oh, I know what you're saying, but we still, we've had a lot of, we've had meetings that have gone very, like, we had, our last meeting went to almost eleven at night, and it tends to be at the end.
All right, it's up to you if you want, we're not on again.
No, but I can, it, well, it's only two weeks from now, and we don't.
And we're trying to get it on the town warrant for the spring, right, so, I mean, as much as it keeps coming up, we, we have until the spring, it really.
Yeah, so.
Right.
I mean, I can, uh, to be honest, I can put it on at eight o'clock, we have that flexibility, I can put it on at eight and get it done while people are fresh, you know? In all seriousness, people need to, this is an important, this is a change in the way we do things, and I'm not gonna, is that okay?
It's okay.
We need to, correspondence, Katrina, please?
Um, sure. Uh, let's see, we had, um, a letter from the community preservation committee, a request for projects, um, Cliff, I actually have a question on that, that came up tonight. The, when you read the, the cover letter on that request for projects, it's unclear whether or not they're going to fall town meeting to approve these projects or not. Are they planning?
Well, we, we haven't had our first meeting yet, so.
We'll probably be in the spring.
It would have to happen soon.
And there's, there's a timetable, from what I can recall.
Yeah, I, all of a sudden I realized that they're not planning on going to fall town meeting with these.
No, no, they're not, because they need to have applications from people about what they wanna use the CP money for.
They're probably not.
Okay.
We're, we're not meeting until, I think, September twenty, something.
Yeah, and then you, you talk to the.
September twenty is the deadline, Friday.
Yeah, sorry, not meeting before that, so.
Yeah, and so you review, and you, you have people come in and explain their projects and why they need to do, why they need the money to do certain things, and
Okay.
the, the board asks questions, and then, it takes.
It's like a grant application, right?
Yeah, it takes a couple of months.
Yeah, I'm, I'm helping out, uh, someone on the agricultural commission, um, write an application for, uh, providing irrigation to the community gardens. Does that sound like something that would fall under?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go to the, because it, it would be on the, um, land that was purchased from, from that CPA.
Right.
Right.
Right, and.
Well, it has to do with open spaces, open space.
And it's also upkeep and keep that, if you're going to get the land initially, you wanna keep it up.
Right now, they're running a hose from a private property.
But, yeah, when, when you have, it, it's.
Sorts for spring, okay, well, that takes a little pressure.
He's got a well.
Okay, and, um, we also had a letter from Ken Ward to Scott Silver regarding the illegal residential use of the second floor of three hundred Newbury Court Turnpike, which is, um, El Tapatio, um, a DHCD forty B training pamphlet, if anyone is interested.
Speaking of, uh, so, Larry, is that for us to, well, since it's kind of an open project, I believe one of the light poles is knocked over, so is that, should be replaced in parking?
Well, special permit, so, I think you could pick that under your wing.
Okay, so, just, that's something you should, write a letter and tell them.
We're also, we're also probably passed a couple of, uh, parking.
Can, can, reviews?
Yeah, reviews, but I don't think it's become, it's, I think it's unfortunately become obvious that they got plenty of parking.
Well, do you wanna write that on the one, just so we can keep in compliance with our own special permit?
Sure.
You write a two.
And include something about a broken light, take a look at it.
Well, can you just run by the place, do an update, 'cause I also look like, you know, just in terms of if you see any, like, the drainage, just do it in reference to what we have for time, you know, I think it's time to update.
Okay. Sure.
That, now that there's a couple issues, including, uh, we need to do our part if we're gonna push back on, and respond to Ken Ward's, um, concerns, which are obvious concerns, because they violate what, um, so.
I'm not gonna get involved with their.
No, but I think we might as well do, do it all, yeah, so, that was an FYI from.
That's primarily a Ken Ward issue.
No, that's an issue.
Yeah, how's that, I mean.
That's an FYI, that's all.
Yeah, right, what, what is it, I don't understand, but.
The financial.
It was just correspondence, instead of getting copies, I'm trying to just, you know, summarize the correspondence, and there would have to be a letter.
So, but people from the restaurant are using an apartment upstairs?
Yeah, I guess he had people living up there or something, I don't know.
Living up there?
All right, so then.
Interesting business, I guess.
Okay, town consulate regarding Kittery Avenue appeal. Town consul submitted a request to Superior Court that the Raleigh Planning Board be designated as a nominal party, since the real parties in interest are the owners of the property. As a nominal party, the planning board's legal counsel will not be required to attend or participate in court proceedings unless specifically directed to do so by the court. And we received town notices from Bauxford, Newbury, Ipswich. And also, lastly, something that wasn't on here, is we received email from Debbie, and she sent over a copy of the actual article that will be on the town warrant for Sheehan Estates bond taking. She wants the planning board to, she said, "We need a formal vote. I need you to have the planning board formally resubmit it back to me for the warrant." And so, this is a copy of the article, and I guess we just need a vote from the planning board to submit it.
Has everybody seen it?
No.
Do we need a vote on that tonight?
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please. And this is, again, a culmination of a lot of work.
Article, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-two thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars plus interest from security held by the town, such security having been deposited by Sheehan Estates Realty Trust and in compliance with general laws, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, paragraph eleven, and general laws, chapter thirty, section thirty-nine M, to be used by the board of selectmen to pay for completing the road construction at Gerzak Lane and the completion and the recording costs of Asbills and street acceptance plans in accordance with an approved subdivision plan or take any other action thereof. Finance committee recommendation from the floor, explanatory note. Approval of this article would authorize the board of selectmen to use the bond deposited with the town by the developer of Sheehan Estates at Gerzak Lane to complete the road construction and related site work at this development in accordance with the approved subdivision plan.
I'm gonna have a motion, and then after the motion, I'll take some discussion if people have a question. Obviously, that, you can see what that says, and that, I believe Katrina has been reviewed by town council and for its accuracy in terms of reference to statute. And this is, again, a culmination of a lot of back and forth between Katrina, town council, town administrator, Ms. Altman.
What's the motion for?
Motion is to submit this article to take the bond at Sheehan Estates.
Rest of the town to have it on the meeting.
And again, Larry made a couple estimates here to get this done within this, hopefully as close to, and has also, Larry has also talked to various entities that could help keep the costs down. Also keeping in mind that has to be prevailing wage.
I was saying, that was my question. It does have to be prevailing wage, all right, yeah.
And then, for the benefit of the residences there can finally get out of this...
I think it's really important...
Finally get out of this morass that they've had to live under.
Yeah, the fact that, so we actually took, to finally get it resolved, it probably, you know, that took some initiative, because that's been around for ten years, right?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Are there any other...
So, we need a motion.
There are motions.
To formally submit that back to the selectmen for the town warrant.
Because obviously, we do have to...
Make a motion that we formally submit back to the...
Second, second by Cliff. All is in favor.
All right.
Well, that's good to finally get that done, all right.
Town, it's just beginning.
No, but in terms of finally get it to a town meeting...
Any more correspondence?
No more correspondence, just the minutes.
Okay, the minutes.
Actually, I wanted to go back along the court, item D. So, it sounds like town council's basically stating that we shouldn't really be a part of that lawsuit, because they're asking us to take, the plaintiff in that case is trying to establish title by adverse possession, and he's, they are accusing us of not taking notice of the fact that he has those legal rights, and so, I mean, that makes, that's consistent with how I was looking at this all along.
It's consistent with statute.
Yes.
Or legally, what is a nominal party? What is a nominal party?
It just means that we're not a real party of interest. We're just sort of a bystander that had to, you know...
Because we don't determine rights, we don't determine rights to tough property.
Exactly, they can't, really. For us to have ruled his favor, we would have had to decide that he has good title to that property.
Take evidence and...
Yeah, right.
Testimony and all.
No, we don't act like land courts.
So, that's why, but the interesting thing is, I mean, I read that complaint, I thought we were the only defendants. It's been a while, so I guess I have to think about it.
No, no, no. I know the people are defendants.
I know they refer to us in our individual capacity, which is unusual.
No, I think it's in the hands, it's in the hands of town council, who has a lot of experience and worked on this municipal situation.
I think we're all...
All right, so, can we do the minutes, please? In addition to the last page, which I haven't read yet, it is the last page. I guess I'm reading it backwards here. We also, one of the last items was obviously, we voted on the annual review evaluation, performance evaluation for Katrina, and that was left out, so we definitely had a discussion. There was a formalized process, and we carried that process out, and Katrina waived her right to have the actual scoring of it in private session, and it was all held in public view.
There's one very small typo.
Which page?
I think, I think it's a typo. The page three, the third line. The board agrees to have him, Larry, review these changes and propose...
Propose the application?
D at the end, I think should be.
Which one?
Right up here, and that should, instead of propose with a D at the end, it should just be propose. Big deal, huh?
Nice catch.
So, you could find...
You passed your English test.
It's good, this stuff.
Wait, it was minutes. Oh, oh, that's bogus.
Yeah, Larry, what was this about?
Resonantistic country club.
Oh, okay.
Pierce motion to grant a six-month extension of tripartite, that's what I need. That's right, and they add that six months, that if in six months, the planning board isn't receipt of a letter from John Moran,
Is John...
Is that worded the way you want it?
So, what page you want?
That's on page two. Let's make sure we have Pierce motion to grant a six-month extension of tripartite, that's what I need.
Okay.
And adds that if in six months, the planning board is in receipt of a letter from John Moran stating that the funds held are a sufficient amount, the board will agree to extend that tripartite another six months.
That's what we agreed to, I think. Is John looking at it, though?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the bottom line is that if they're held, if they're sufficient. And also, in terms of grammar, too, the board is in receipt, this is Market Basket paragraph, third sentence. Board is in receipt of a town council recommendation that the board hold... Holds, there's holds, maybe, hold's a special permit pumped that the board hold, a special town permit to...
I think it's holds.
It is holds, because it's singular.
Singular, yeah.
It's singular. Sorry?
Cliff? Yeah, is that right?
Yeah.
No, it is right, it is. It's funny, though, many people interchange that one. And you're, Jake, is David, you're supposed to say why you recuse. By, is it typically...
You should.
When somebody recu, I think you're supposed to say why, because, you know, when the selectmen or when someone else refuses.
They don't know why I did it. That makes it clearer.
Well, he actually didn't explain it during the meeting, so the minutes are...
No, it did. It was implied. No, but I think you're supposed to, that's all, so is that something, can we add it now? No? We can't.
Didn't have it in the meeting.
You can, okay. Just for future reference, if you recuse, please say why.
Yes.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Any other amendment to?
Nope.
Make a motion that we accept the...
Second.
Yes, correct it.
In favor? opposed? Am I opposed? All right, thanks for your help tonight.
I have one last question. Please put your letter in the record, explaining the phasing difference.
No, we won't, yeah, okay.
Put your letter in the record?
Yeah.
Yeah, just in...
It's gonna be in there. It's gonna be referenced in the minutes, and it'll be in the record.
This is a paper trail of the different...
It's an important paper trail. Are there any questions on number six, before we adjourn on Bill's payable, which we signed? And Katrina, again, please read the expense report. It is the job of our town planner. Every meeting, there should be an expense report, so we get the recuse to see where the money's going. No questions?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, wait.
No, this isn't on them.
Okay. Katrina, anything else to say before we adjourn?
I do not.
Okay.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.